Good, good evening. I see by the clock that it is 7:00 PM and time to start the public hearing this evening for the zoning board of appeals. Will all board members participating in the hearing tonight? Come forward, raise your hand and acknowledge your presence.
Andy.
Kathy, Andy, Steve, and Lee. We have four members seated tonight for the hearing.
Keith is there.
We have Keith.
Kathy, Steve, Lee, and me. That's five.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, Keith, sorry. I didn't see you on my list here.
All right.
Well, good to see you.
Thank you. Likewise.
And we just, we just got a sixth, Danielle.
Oh, Danielle, very good. Thank you for joining us. Good evening and welcome to the September 19th, 2024 meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, can we take a quick, take a quick timeout? Keith?
Yes.
Do you desperately need to take off?
I would, I saw Tammy's note about staying on for the one that Danielle needs to recuse herself, but I'd certainly appreciate not doing the rest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So Danielle, you will be recusing yourself on item eight tonight at 19 Dock Road. Keith will sit in your stead and Keith, you'll be leaving the meeting after Dock Street. And Danielle will join the voting board on that final issue tonight. So for all present, let's spend a few minutes reviewing how this meeting will be conducted. For the first two hours prior to 9:00 PM, we shall hold a public hearing on the applications that you received a notice on and that were listed in the Norwalk hour for hearing. After the application is announced by the chair and read by the secretary, the applicant will state his or her name for the record and then present the appeal or relief being sought. Please present those zoning issues that are relevant to the practical difficulties or hardship requiring this application. After you or your representative has spoken, those in favor will have the chance to be heard. After that segment, those against the application will have the opportunity to state their opposition for the record. In the case of an appeal, the zoning staff will have the opportunity to present their findings. Finally, after those against the application have spoken, the applicant and only the applicant will have the opportunity to rebut and respond to the issues raised. The hearing is then closed and the next application called. The new applications will not normally be heard after 9:00 PM as the board must discuss and act upon these applications. Please note that no further public input is accepted at that time. You are welcome to stay for this portion of tonight's meeting, but should you decide to leave, you may contact the zoning office tomorrow to learn about our decision. Before we proceed tonight, I must remind you that this hearing is a recorded video conference and will become a matter of permanent public record. For public comment period, all comments must state their name and address and comments must be on topic. Anyone using threatening hateful or sexually explicit language will be cut off and removed from the meeting and will not be allowed to rejoin. The first case to be heard this evening is application 24-0919-1, Carlo and Meredith Vona, the property located at 19 Dock Road. Danielle, if you would read the application and then you can sign yourself off.
Sure. 24-0919-01, Carlo and Meredith Vona, variance for a number of stories per table 4.3.1-C, two and a half maximum allowed, three proposed to raise and renovate an existing single family dwelling in zone CD-1S. Properties located at 19 Dock Road, District 5, Block 84, Lot 144. Request, the applicant seeks the variance for an additional story to be constructed at an existing single family home proposed to be renovated and elevated to make flood compliant background. The existing home was built in 1952. Real estate listings from 2023 indicate that this was an estate sale and the listing stated it was a diamond in the rough and is being sold as is. City records indicate some permits for renovation, siding and propane tank were issued over the years. However, it is unclear whether those renovations were ever initiated or completed. Analysis and findings, when elevated, the lower level will be designated per regulations of story, although it will only be used for storage and parking as flood regulations require. The lower level first story will be partially open and the elevated foundation walls will include flood vents. The second story will be the first living floor. Finally, the proposed upper living level, which is per regulations, a third story as it is not under a pitched roof, which is the requirement to be considered an attic slash half story. The proposed height of the structure is compliant at approximately 32 feet. Strict interpretation of the half story regulation as applied to the architectural mid-century modern style could be deemed a zoning hardship slash practical difficulty. Please find the attached coastal site plan review memo from Amelia Williams. Amelia indicates if the ZBA approves the coastal site plan associated with the variance, the applicant may then proceed with the application into planning and zoning commission for CAM approval of the entire project. Amelia concludes that more information is needed for review and notes, among other concerns, an issue with the proposed retaining wall compliance for the driveway. While not reflected on the plans as presented, the applicant's representative has indicated that they will remove the proposed retaining wall for the driveway. For this application, two separate decision motions are needed, variance request, which must include the hardship slash practical difficulty declaration and two, the coastal site plan review, which must include a declaration that the proposal is or is not consistent with CCMA goals and policies and will or will not adversely impact any coastal resources. And then we have the attachment from Amelia Williams. All right, which I will read into the record now. Upon review of our records and maps, it appears the property at 19 Dock Road directly abuts coastal resources. The closest point of disturbance is grading approximately 10 feet from the coastal jurisdiction line entitled Marsh. As the proposed work is within 50 feet of coastal resources, this project requires a full coastal site plan review and CAM application to Planning and Zoning Commission per section 6.10 of the City of Norwalk zoning regulations. However, any application for variance within the coastal area management boundary is required per statute CGS 22A-105 to be reviewed for the potential impact to coastal resources by the ZBA. The board is responsible to determine if the requested variance is consistent with the goals and policies of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, CCMA, and your ZBA findings or motion must contain a statement that the proposal is or is not consistent with the CCMA goals and policies and will or will not adversely impact any coastal resources. If the ZBA approves the coastal site plan associated with the variance, the applicant may continue with its application to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a coastal site plan review of the project in its entirety beyond the scope of the requested variance. With the proposal to raise and modify the structure, it is important to consider the potential impact of a rise in sea level, coastal flooding and erosion patterns. Minimal development near sensitive coastal resources is preferred and the request of a variance of the story requirement would allow for an increase of living area, which may result in a significant exposure of life and property to flood hazards. It is not recommended to allow significant expansion of living space in flood prone areas to be consistent with CCMA flood hazard policy to minimize threats to life and property. This application was previously submitted to the planning, to the Planning and Zoning Commission before staff identified the non-compliant story. The application was withdrawn and a variance was applied for. There were other issues with that application that remain relevant to this proposal. Overall, more information is needed pertaining to the proposal to raise the driveway. In addition, the proposed retaining wall is not compliant as the zoning regulations require all retaining walls to be located at least 10 feet away from any property lines. Details about how the ground disturbance, retention system, insulation, raising of the driveway, et cetera, will impact the stormwater runoff that is needed. It is also important to know that all stormwater will be treated on site. The narrative from the applicant's attorney advises only that the runoff created from the addition will be treated on site, not all runoff. The location of utilities should be shown on a site plan. They will need to be made flood compliant and comply with setbacks. The grading plan indicates this will be confirmed in the field. The application also indicates that there are no adverse impacts. However, the intensified development of the site with the significant ground disturbance and grading must be considered. There are outstanding questions about the septic system and if an upgrade will be required. The septic site plan indicates that the home has three bedrooms, but the variance narrative and existing floor plans indicate that there are four. DEEP also commented that the original submission with the submission with concerns about the lack of sediment and erosion control details and the lack of details regarding the grading and filling the driveway and the lack of details pertaining to the landscaping. Recommendations were made to plant a minimum 15 foot buffer along the entire length of the property to protect, preserve and enhance tidal wetlands consistent with CCMA policy and not to significantly expand living spaces in flood zones. There are also unanswered questions about the removal of the maple trees and why comparable species are not part of the proposed landscaping plans. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. If you have any questions above, regarding the above, please call or email me.
Danielle, thank you, and we will speak to you with the next item that comes up.
Right.
I'd like to request that the representative for this application come forward and identify themselves.
Good, good evening. Adam Blank lives here in Norwalk Council for Carlo and Meredith Vona, who are both on screen with me is Laura and Delacatti from my office. We've also got Jim Jamison, the architect, Wayne Davanzo, the engineer, and I think I'm missing, oh, there you are, Matt, Matt, Matt Pop, the landscape architect and a wetland soil scientist. So I'm going to give a quick, maybe not so quick, but as quick as I can presentation. And then we'll turn it over to just some of those folks you'll hear from, but not all of them tonight. But, but everybody's here so they can answer hopefully all of your questions. So obviously the property is 19 Dock Road. Going to share my screen. So we've got 19 Dock up right here. It's, as you heard, it's in the CD1S zone. We've submitted to your staff the green cards and return receipts certifying in notice to neighbors as well as photos of the sign, which is a new rule placed on the property. So tonight, all we're asking for tonight is a variance for one story. And it's my understanding that there may be opposition. I think I saw a letter come in today. And so we're going to try to go through the sort of the full application and also, you know, complicating things a little bit because we're on the water. It's always been in the statute, but my recollection is that your board has never historically done a sort of CAM review in connection with a variance request on waterfront applications. Just to kind of keep things in perspective, if you were to grant our variance this evening, we have to file a site plan application and a CAM site plan application with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And they have to consider whether we comply with CAM as well. So they're going to do this exact same analysis, assuming that if a variance is granted within the next month. So we're hoping we resolve all of your questions and concerns that may relate to CAM, but we certainly have to resolve them all through the Planning and Zoning Commission before we can actually go forward with any project. So with that, the property, we're at 19 Dock here. It's in the VE 17 and AE 13 flood zones. I'll show you, this is, this is the existing home. It's in a historic district, the Village Creek District, but it's not, I mean, I guess some of you are architects, I'm not, I wouldn't call this an architectural jewel. And it's a fairly modest sized home and it has flooding. This is a fairly recent photo, but the flooding is not an isolated incident. So this is what we're dealing with currently at the house. The Vona has just recently purchased the home with the intention of raising it so that it's FEMA compliant and so that it's sort of a more updated livable home, but certainly in keeping with the spirit and style of Village Creek. The Village Creek, just as a refresher, in case you're not familiar, but they are in fact a homeowners association with fairly strict architectural rules and an architectural review board. So you can't, you can't cut down a tree, you can't change your house without going through them first. That's not in lieu of going through you folks in the city, but that's an additional hurdle. And so what we'd like to do, what the Vona's would like to do is to raise the house, make it flood compliant and take what, take the, the living space, when they lift it up, it'll be a single story home. They want to add about a half story above. They want to take the house and you would have your raised here. This is not livable space, it's open. One floor, one full floor of livable space. And this is slightly more than a half, but, but roughly a half. And this doesn't count as a half story, this counts as a full story, but it obviously doesn't project across the full width. We're not expanding the footprint, we're not moving closer to the water. We're simply lifting up the existing house and adding a top piece here. This is an addition of about 840 square feet. The house will be about 32 feet high. The, we're not asking for a height variance, there are height restrictions. Was that the question? Sorry. No, okay. We're not asking for a height variance, the height, the maximum height you're allowed in this zone is 35 feet to the midpoint of a roof and on a pitched roof, 40 feet to the peak. So we're well below the, the maximum heights and not asking for a variance on that. The, within, within the CDS, CD1S zone, you're allowed two and a half stories. I'll stop sharing for just a second. In the zone, you're allowed two and a half stories, right? So the CD1S zone predominantly covers non-waterfront homes, but a portion of it is, is water.
Sorry, that's me.
Okay. All right, so on this, the CD1S is, is mostly non-waterfront homes. And you know, if you think about, you're allowed two and a half stories. If you've got a house in that zone and you're not waterfront, you're going to have, or you're allowed to have a basement, right? And you can fully furnish that basement, finish that basement. Then you get two stories above that. And then if you put a pitched roof on your house, you get a third story above that. So you can effectively have three and a half or four levels of living space in the zone. That's what's allowed. If you're on the water and you can't have a pitched roof and Village Creek doesn't like pitched roofs, they want flat roofs to, to maintain the historical character of the neighborhood. If you've got a flat roof and you raise your home to make it FEMA compliant, you're allowed one story under Norwalk zoning regs. Or one, what I'm calling one story, you call it two, but it's one, one story of livable space. Compared to someone in the zone who's not on the water, they can have up to four and a half floors of living space that are classified as two and a half. Or I'm sorry, three and a half, three and a half floors of living space that get classified as two and a half stories. So that what we're asking for is, is one and a half stories of living space, which is even less living space than most in the zone. And, but it does require a variance for floors because of the, your FEMA rules. The, I will point out in, in 2017, this board granted a variance to construct not a third story addition, and this was a third story of living space, a third story of addition on property just down the street at 28 Dock Road in Village Creek. And in that instance, although that home already had two, two levels of finished floors, the board considered the third story addition to be a modest expansion, and that's a quote from you folks. Acknowledged that the location of the home in a designated historic district of mid-century moderns with flat low pitch roofs for which zoning's half story definition doesn't consider presented a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship that warranted a variance. So we can't add that second story without also raising the house to make it FEMA compliant, just like 28 Dock. If we raise it to make it FEMA compliant, we need a variance for that additional story. So that's the hardship and the practical difficulty. And you've of course granted quite a number of variances over the years where folks have looked to raise their home in the existing footprint and not move it closer to the water and not expand the footprint, but raise the home, whether it included additions above or not. The, and again, for perspective, the existing home has a basement of about 574 square feet. It's carpeted, it's got a shower in the basement, it's not exactly finished, but it could be finished. It's got a first floor of 1,627 square feet. That's a total of 2,200 square feet. What we're asking for is to have a home raised with the first floor of open, but with the, the finished second floor and the half story on the third of 2,240 square feet. So we're not talking about a massive sort of addition or expansion. It's less than 40 square feet, it's in the footprint. And even if you remove the basement calculations, you're still talking about 600 square feet or so. It's a very modest sized proposed home that is certainly in keeping with the, the same sizing of similar of the rest of the homes essentially in Village Creek. Some are a little smaller, some are a little bigger, but it's in that range. And these are well below the size of most of the waterfront homes that have been built in the last 10 or 20 years here in Norwalk. The proposed structure will fully comply with FEMA and I'm, I'm going through a little bit of stuff that I wouldn't normally because of the, the, you're going to make a finding on the CAM finding. So I, I just need to make a record of that, but it's, will fully comply with FEMA. It's going to be conservatively constructed with poured concrete piers on the marsh side with that open ground level. We're going to decrease the impervious surface coverage to approximately 16% of the land area. The, the regulations allow 35% of coverage. This is going to be just about 16. You've got a drainage report showing that we're going to have a significant improvement in the treatment proposed by the drainage design. We're adding three cul tech retention chambers. And in addition to those, there's also pervious driveway. So that will also help with drainage. There's minimal regrading that's proposed, really just to, to help with the elevations to meet the flood hazard regulations. We've submitted a landscaping plan that Matt Pop will talk with you about, but, but I will show you that we're submitting a landscaping plan. Your tidal wetlands, you don't usually do tidal wetlands with a coastal jurisdiction line, but a tidal wetlands like delineation, which is here, there's actually a stone wall thereafter. We're proposing a 12 foot wide wetland buffer. That's not like grass, that'll be wetland buffered mode only during the winter months to afford a eight inch height. And then you can see beyond that 12 foot buffer, there'll be lawn area for essentially a minimum of 10 feet to the house. It's, it's greater in this area. But so there's a pretty large expanse between the tidal wetland, the rock wall and the structure that we're proposing. You have got a, and so it's, it is FEMA compliant, fully compliant with the policies and goes to the Coastal Management Act. Obviously, this is what we're trying to avoid and certainly by raising it, we're going to avoid that. We have got a letter of support from Miguel Frascone, who's the Chair of the Village Creek Architectural Review Board. They have reviewed this and approved, and approved support for the variance request. No concerns over the proposal to raise the home, so it can be FEMA compliant, add a partial upper story addition. Great to see the home brought into FEMA compliance and updated in a manner in harmony with Village Creek Neighborhood's flat roof home mid-century style. There's a similar letter of support from Amanda Foss, who's the Village Creek Homeowners Association Board President. I won't read that to you, and that relates both to the CAM site plan and the variance. Additionally, many of you are probably familiar with Todd Bryant and his company Heritage Resources. Todd has additionally submitted a letter that he reviewed the architectural plans for the remodeling of the residence at 19 Dock. It was built in 1955, is a contributing asset to the Village Creek Historic District, which Todd wrote in 2010. I'm going to skip some of this, but the spirit is embodied in the progressive ideas included in it. This is in Village Creek's governance and its substance is embodied in the design of its buildings. The contemporary architectural style of the house in its remodeled form follows the original Village Creek Architectural Control Committee definition of that style by including a flat roof and horizontal rather than vertical lines. The proposed renovation is sympathetic to the original design of the house and will be consistent with the required contemporary style and will easily fit into the historic district. The, the variance can be granted where it's shown that there will not be, it will not substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan. An adherence to the strict letter of the zoning ordinance would cause an unusual hardship. So in our courts, the Connecticut courts have repeatedly held over and over that variances are properly granted when they're sought to bring a building in compliance with FEMA and municipal flood regulations. I've cited to you those cases before. They've also held that variances are properly granted when the hardship arises from the historic nature of a home and/or its architectural features. Again, this is a historic district and a home that's of historic significance within the district. The granting this proposed variance will not affect the comprehensive zoning plan. In fact, it's, it's there to comply with the FEMA's flood elevations and the flood regulations. In your staff memo, a concern was raised by Ms. Maldonado about placing a one to two foot retaining wall too near the property line. As, as I, as you heard, we have agreed to remove that retaining wall and simply grade the edge of the driveway, which I think resolves that concern that and you may be interested in that. It's, it's not directly relevant to the story variance that we're seeking and we certainly have to establish the, the grading and to the satisfaction of the Planning and Zoning Commission with a site plan application and the CAM application that we would hope to present to them if you're kind enough to grant us the variance this evening. And there was another memo that you had read to you from Ms. Williams related to the CAM application. The, I'm going to let the rest of the team do their presentations. I think that will address most of the concerns that were raised by Ms. Williams in her memo, some of which you may want to just defer to the Planning and Zoning Commission to deal with on the site plan review. But, but I think we can satisfy most of your, if not all of your questions related to that memo in our presentations or in response to your questions. Unless there's questions for me, I'll try to turn it over at this point to Jim Jamison, the, the project architect.
I've got one. What is your hardship exactly?
The hardship is, it's, there's a, a few different hardships on this one. You've got a hardship that you're, the, because the property's in the flood zone, you need to comply with FEMA. And in order to comply with FEMA, we've got to raise the house, a story, which makes you ooze a story. And again, there's been, I can cite you case after case.
Adam, the original house that was purchased by the buyer has a story. If you raise the house, If you raise the house, it'll have two stories. But you want something beyond that, so what is the hardship that gets you beyond that?
The the hardship is that the zoning regulations allow two and a half stories. Which in almost any other location within this zone under the existing regulations. Allow you to have a finished basement, a finished first floor, a finished second floor, and a finished attic. So that's four levels of living space, the hardship here is that you get one. You get one.
And and you're next to the water, so if you want a flooded basement, you go right ahead and have a basement.
No.
I don't think CAM, I don't think the CAM review will go for that, but you're you're adding a story. Yeah, yeah. You're adding a story and asking us to say that the zoning rigs are causing your hardship. Well, I understand that.
The it's being being in a that that is, that is what I'm saying is that the. That you if you if this house, you cannot build a basement in this flood zone now, you wouldn't be able to do that, I I I wasn't trying to suggest that. What I'm saying is, if if you owned a house in Broad River, in Silvermine, in West Norwalk, not in a flood zone. You could build a essentially four stories of living space in the CD one S zone. It permits four levels of living space.
That's not pertinent. What you have to live with is where you are and what exists and whether the code allows it. I could care less what someplace else in Norwalk collects.
The zone, the zone allows it, this zone.
You're right next to the water and you have to deal with that as it is.
And that's the hardship, exactly.
Well, now for adding a floor, it's a hardship, asking the asking to raise the house, and we have traditionally granted that. To add a floor is not a hardship, and I think you're gonna have to work harder on what the heck it would be a hardship for.
Well.
For instance, you can't expand the building elsewhere, I mean, that just just doesn't fly.
Well, we we could put, we could put, you would be able to put, so as I started, I said, there's 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 two reasons, one is the FEMA. The second is that in trying to keep it the Village Creek District and the historic character of the neighborhood, it's a flat roof. Yeah, we could, we could just put under the code without a without a variance, a pitched roof forty feet high. That gives us actually much larger room as a second story, that is allowed without a variance, but. Not not in keeping with Village Creek's flat roof style, which is why you guys granted a variance a few years ago. That third story in Village Creek to add that extra living space above, it's been done, it's been, that's what the precedent is.
I think I remember that, what's the address of that?
Colin Holston's house, it was twenty eight Dock.
Yeah, okay, I do remember. With with respect to adding a story, do you have other alternatives?
Can I jump in here a minute?
Somebody can jump in, I'm just saying, what alternatives do you have besides adding a story?
Can I can I jump in here a minute? The house is now two stories. The basement counts as a story. So.
Well, let me jump in a second and ask, does what you're calling a basement. Meet the definition of a basement, which is a space that is fifty percent. The perimeter of which is fifty percent buried below grade.
No, it's not, that's it's it's more than it's more than fifty percent exposed, so it would be considered a story.
Okay, it's not a basement then.
So we're taking.
Call it a basement.
Right, okay, so we're taking our.
Mister Blank is incorrect.
First floor and the first floor you see from the street is actually the second floor. So we are taking our current first floor and putting it up on top of. The current second floor to meet FEMA, so we're not adding any stories, we're just relocating it due to FEMA. Because the regular, the interpretation of your definition of story. Is, I I don't know, to me, a story is something that would be habitable space. Well, this house is going to be up on piers exposed to the outside, it is not habitable space, we're just elevating it to meet FEMA. So it's really not a story because you can't live there. But we're taking the first floor at grade on the back of the house and just putting on top of the roof.
Think we understand that principle. Yeah, I I think the bit that Adam and Jim are perhaps missing is. What Andy and Lee are saying is. We need to frame this in terms of a hardship in order to give a variance. It's not that anybody's unsympathetic, I don't, well, speak for myself, I'm not unsympathetic to the request. It's we have to work within the confines.
Right, and and in in the past, you have decided that being in Village Creek. With a flat roof requirement meets those confines for a hardship.
Well, we can we can delay you and look at it for the next four weeks or whatever and look at twenty eight and see what we said. But past is not precedent, you have to deal with this property and its condition and what it is that you want to accomplish. And I haven't heard what alternatives are my thing.
Also too, if I may add, the plan says that the house will be raised. Yet you're stating that you're taking one story and putting it on top of another, I mean, the house will be raised and you'll be building new construction, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, understood.
So let's let's get our. Language correct, the house will be demolished. And then a new residence constructed, is that correct, Carlo?
No, that is incorrect, the house is going, the current home will be raised, the current structure will be raised out of the flood zone. And and made FEMA compliant, so the base, the the current home will be raised to the base flood elevation.
It will be lifted.
Lifted, sorry.
Okay, let's, we we need to get our terminology correct.
Correct.
Let me ask another question.
Yes.
I've dealt with mid-century modern houses. And I've lifted an awful lot of houses. Has it been determined that this house structurally can be lifted safely?
Yes. Yes, that's that that is absolutely, we were absolutely able to lift what we have there.
Okay.
Correct, and and if I can add, the Architectural Review Board has stated that a pitch roof would not. Would not pass their would not be approved by the Architectural Review Board for that space.
I think we all understand that, we've looked at Village Creek. Several times, and we understand the restrictions on the architectural design.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Jim?
Yes.
You want to give a a brief presentation?
Okay. May pull that. Hang on. Nope, where'd we go? I lost you.
We're here.
All right. Okay, there we are. Let me, uh, let's see, I canceled that out, hang on. We pull up the drawing. So this is the. Cross-section through the building, the right-hand side is Dock Road. At elevation nine point five, back of the house is at seven point three. Base flood is thirteen, Norwalk. Requires a two-foot freeboard. So that puts the top of our foundation at elevation fifteen. So that's our starting point for elevating the house. And then we have our existing first floor and then our proposed, you know, new addition on top. So the. We look at the. Plan. Trying to get this. Okay, so. Wanted to get to the. Okay, here's. So this is our new foundation plan, which is essentially just a structural wall on the front. And the rest is just piers supporting the existing structure, so it's. Essentially about three quarters of a, three quarters of open space. Of just available for parking, but you wouldn't really store anything down there because we can see that this place floods. Even in a regular high tide. As far as the elevations go. So the house is a split, basically a split level, on the left side, there's a lower level that's about thirty inches below. The right-hand side of the house, so our benchmark is the left side here, which is a fifteen foot. And then we just adjust the elevation to. Uh, meet meet the difference.
I didn't understand that statement. The floor of the left side will be fifteen feet up?
Yeah, the house is now a split level, so the left-hand side of the house is thirty inches below the right-hand side of the house. So we're lifting it up.
Okay, alright.
So so.
I thought you weren't lifting it up and you were leaving it below the other way, alright.
Yeah, it's still, we'll still have the split, but we're lifting it up equally left and right, so the right side will be, you know. Above the the thirty inches above the lowest level.
So you still carry the the general design of a split level?
Yes, exactly, so the the existing house just is this box here. We're adding an area on the the left side here. Which was came about through some discussions with the Architectural Review Board, initially, we thought we'd be going on the right side, but no people. We ended up on the left side. We were sort of.
Did they tell you why they wanted it on the left?
There was a neighbor that thought she would have better sightlines if the addition was on the left, so we said, okay, we can, we can manage that.
Okay, thanks.
You know, we were on the cusp of the whole. Zone change, you know, we sort of overlapped that and we'd started this before the zone change, and we were told that we could add eight hundred feet. As a matter of right, but with the new zone change, that sort of put everything sort of topsy-turvy, so that's like ancient history.
Alright, so your design plan was in progress before the zone.
Yeah, the zone.
Regulations that we have now took effect.
Right, exactly, and it, you know, we we thought we were in process there, but we were told that we'd have to comply with the new regulations, so that's.
Jim, the the we just jumped in for one second, in the, under the old regs, if you built the house on piers. The the what you're what we're calling this first story didn't count as a story. And and wouldn't, which eliminated this, the story issue and the variance issue, and they had applied, had put everything together and applied. And there was a miscommunicate, let's call it a miscommunication with the with the staff, because it was such a small addition. That it didn't trigger a CAM review and no CAM application was filed. And then it was discovered that, wait a minute, but since you're on the water, even though it's so small, you do need a CAM application in. But now the zoning reg change, so now your first story that you just tried to raise, that now counts as a story, even if you put it on piers. So now you need a variance, you can't just get it approved through the CAM application.
Alright, let let me summarize something and then you tell me if I'm wrong. You're staying within the footprint. You're gonna raise it to the fifteen-foot level. And you'd like to add a story on top of what is not as high a story as the story on the right. That as I'm looking at this.
Correct.
Alright, is that why you were calling it a half-story, even though it's not?
It would only be a half-story if we had a pitched roof.
Alright.
But.
I get it, I got it, I got it.
Creek won't allow pitched roof, so we have to go with a flat roof.
Yeah, I'm I'm fully aware of what you're talking about, the problem I had was the way you put it together. That the code was your hardship, the code is not your hardship.
No.
Right, isn't your hardship the Village Creek restrictions? I mean, that's how I understand it.
I think the Village Creek restriction could be considered a hardship, yeah. But I don't think our code, the Norwalk code is a hardship, if we start doing that. Anybody that comes before the ZVA could have anything they want, because they can say the zoning code is a hardship, it's not.
Alright, agreed.
No, I I think the issue becomes that when you raise a a house to meet FEMA. That you're counting the open area under the house as a story. And and there are numerous, you know, like all along Crocker Street, there are houses there that can never be improved because. They would exceed the the story limit without a variance.
I I don't have a great deal of trouble with the design. I just had a great deal of trouble with the explanation of what the hardship was. I think the hardship is the requirements of the village district and the limitations on what roof you can put on it.
I think that's fair enough, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I initially my first design, I had to give a roof on it. I was told, no, that's not gonna happen.
Thanks.
Yeah, I I agree, I didn't want to lead the witness there, Adam, but that's what I was suggesting.
Yeah, if you.
We're all. Yeah, we all understand that as a as what's being put forward, I don't know if there's any other hardship you can come up with, but that certainly is one.
Yeah, that and that is, I mean, that is, I have, if you want to see it, to to believe it, but it is actually part of the record anyway. But for the for the twenty eight Dock, the staff memo on that specifically said that the the Village Creek. Flat roof, what requirement was the hardship? We can put it on the screen if you want to see it.
I have a feeling Andy sort of said precedent was not gonna be a factor here.
Yeah, I'm I'm just offering it. Hi, Jim, you want to finish up?
I'll go to. Let me just go to, you know, the first, you know, the first floor. You know, we have a living space, you know, laundry, a couple utility areas. On the left side, that lower level is a a bedroom. And then up on the second floor, we just have. You know, staircase up and two bedrooms, so it's essentially staying a three-bedroom house. From what, you know, was the original, original number of bedrooms in the house.
And 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 that was part of Amelia's memo, it it is a four, it was purchased, I mean, the bonus didn't do it, it was purchased as a four-bedroom home. It was really only approved as originally as a three-bedroom home, and we're proposing to restore that back to a three-bedroom home.
Right. Yeah, the original house in this in this area actually had two bedrooms here, and then there was another bedroom, so. There, it was, and they they blown the walls out and just made a mess of it.
Alright, Jim, give anything more?
That's about it.
Okay.
I, um, let me ask Tammy, her staffers, on the CAM side of this, where we're supposed to say we've seen the plan and and we think it's feasible. On the cam side of this, where we're supposed to say we've seen the plan and, and we think it's feasible. I don't know if I can say that. Do we have to do that?
So, but it's only related to the scope of the variance request for stories, maybe not necessarily the other site issues that they're not seeking variance of, so it's, I think you can break it down. Into two parts.
Right, well, the part of raising the house isn't an issue with me. Um, actually, the additional. Upper level isn't, is a problem with me either, but all the other cam issues, you know, they've, they've got to solve that. With the other commission, and I don't want to say that we think it's just fine unless we, uh, limit what we're saying to the house structure itself.
Yeah, I think that's fair, I think you can qualify any decision as saying as it relates to the scope of the variance request.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Jim, if you don't mind, um, unsharing your screen and then we'll let, uh, Matt Pop, the landscape architect, uh, go for a couple minutes. Matt?
Good evening, Matthew Pop, landscape architect, professional wetland scientist. I was on the Greenwich Island Wetlands and Water courses for sixteen years, uh, about ten years ago on the. Uh, wetland consultant for the city of Bridgeport for the last thirty, thirty-five years or so. Um, and we do a lot of wetland permitting in Fairfield County. Um, and again, licensed landscape architect. So I could share my screen, let's just see. Let me know if you can see the.
Didn't come up yet.
There we go. Uh, again, uh, the. Street is kind of down at the bottom of the page, house is near the center of the site. Uh, the tidal wetlands are up at the top of the site, which is, you know, east, so north is to the left. Uh, there's a existing stone wall right through here. Basically, the tidal wetland line follows that, um. That stone wall, just a little bit on the low side of that wall, the tidal wetlands are defined by vegetation. Um, inland wetlands are defined by soil types, but tidal wetlands by vegetation. Uh, right adjacent to tidal wetlands, kind of in the center of the site, there's a large, um. Juniper mass, it's maybe about five feet in height, by probably, you know, ten feet, twelve feet wide, it's extremely dense. Um, in this area through here and over here, there's lawn area. Uh, surrounding the house is, uh, basically, uh, lawn. There's a couple of trees up through here that, uh, are going to be removed. Uh, these, these trees overhang the house. Uh, we're proposing a underground detention gallery here, uh, for stormwater runoff. So we're, we're proposing, uh, for planting, uh, we have seventeen native shrubs kind of here and here, and then in front of that. We have a row of, uh, mainly it's, uh, native grass, a spice, uh, switchgrass. And some seaside goldenrod, uh, that increases the buffer, you know, from, you know, some places there's zero distance, the lawn goes right up to the tidal wetlands. But we're increasing that to twelve feet, we wanted to kind of keep a ten foot, uh, distance from the edge. Of the deck here to the tidal wetlands, uh, so we are enhancing that, uh, buffer, uh, the buffer is important. Because it filters any, uh, water that flows down off the site. Uh, through the buffer and it kind of purifies it before getting into the tidal wetlands, also provides additional wildlife habitat. Uh, for water quality, uh, the, the, the detention gallery here provides, uh, that, um, again, it filters the runoff from the. Roof goes into the ground and then it filters, uh, by groundwater, uh, to the tidal wetlands. Uh, on this side of the site, I think there's a question why we're not proposing deciduous trees, uh, we are proposing one large oak in the front and. A, um, flower, flowering dogwood here, but there's an existing house right here, so we're proposing, uh, American holly, uh, American, I. Quite often I use American holly along the coast, it provides, uh, dense, uh. Screening and dense habitat for, uh, wildlife, um, along the coast in the winter time, you often find owls and. The, the holly, so that's one of the reasons why I prefer to use hollies. Along the coast, I didn't propose the hollies, uh, down this, down low, because there's a house here, we want to kind of maintain. Or their view, we didn't want to block, uh, their view. So again, just to sum up. Um, I think the site's going to improve the water quality. Again, it's less lawn area, uh, we're putting water back into the ground, uh, the buffer will enhance the wildlife habitat. Uh, and, you know, based on, uh. You know, my review of the project, you know, there's no, no adverse impact, uh, over the existing additions to the tidal wetlands, I think. Some of those wetland functions would be enhanced, so if there's any questions, I'll be. Happy to answer them. The plant list is over here, if you want to.
Can I just, uh, add something?
Sure.
Um, along with the, uh, Coltech retention system. To mitigate stormwater, we're also proposing a impervious paver driveway. To help with runoff. And because a lot of the hot water. That comes off a dock road, we're at, the, the driveway for dock road is at a lower point. A lot of that hot water seems to drain onto the property. Um, our, uh, uh. Uh, pervious paver driveway is going to help mitigate a lot of that hot water that. Seems to filter its way to the marsh and, and wreak havoc on the ecosystem. So, uh, we had brought that up to the harbor commission at one of our earlier meetings, uh, back in, uh, December, November. And, uh, and they were extremely floored, uh, in a good way, that, uh, that we were taking the initiative. To be that much more eco-friendly to that area.
So the way the, uh, the porous pavement works is, um. The, the, underneath the asphalt, which is porous, uh, there's a deep gravel bed, sometimes it's twelve to eighteen inches in depth. So the water flows through the asphalt, that goes into that gravel bed. And there where it filters into the ground, again, it, uh, it reduces thermal pollution, so that's, that's one of the, the benefits of it.
Yep.
Alright. If there's not further questions for Matt, um. We, we've got the project engineers here, I won't have him give a presentation unless you have specific questions for, um, Wayne. Um, and we can. If you want to run through that, uh, those cam concerns that were raised by the Amelia in the Planning and Zoning Office. We can, we can talk about those if you'd like, or if you feel like you've heard enough of, for those that relate specifically to the story issue. I, I don't want to take up time that you don't need me to, but I, I'll cover it if you'd like me to.
I think you pretty well covered it, in my opinion, but there's four others, so let's hear the other.
Um, I'm fairly satisfied it's been covered.
Okay, if everybody's satisfied.
Well, yeah.
Okay, then, um, then at that point, we'll sort of, uh, close, but, um, reserve our right, uh, if there's, um, public comment to, to have an opportunity to rebut that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey. Hi, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please raise your hand.
So we have one caller, so if, if the caller, if you want to speak in favor, you have to press star nine on the phone. There are no raised hands.
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of this project?
Yes. We have. Rick Costantini.
Mr. Costantini.
Hi, how are, how's everybody tonight? Thank you for, um, for having me. Uh, I submitted a letter earlier today and I hope that all of you have, uh, had an opportunity to review it. I'm not going to read that letter, uh, which would be redundant, I'm just gonna highlight a couple points based on the applicant's presentation, I'll start with the fact that. Uh, again, my name is Rick Costantini, I'm an attorney with the law firm of FLB Law in Westport, Connecticut. I've been retained by, uh, one of the neighbors of the subject property, uh, Terry Sims, she lives at sixteen Dock Road, which is across the street from the, uh, subject property. Being, Connecticut general statutes provide DBAs with authority to vary zoning rate, uh, to. Issue variances for zoning regulations, but there's strict guidelines on how that can be done, first and foremost, you have to, the applicant must show a hardship. Um, I don't believe that's been done here, I'll get to that in a second, the second aspect has, is that the hardship must be unique to the property. And finally, when considering whether or not there is a hardship, you have to also consider. Um, how that, how the variance, um, relates to conserving the public health, safety, convenience, welfare and property values. Regarding the hardships, in discussion, it sounds like the, the hardship identified by the applicant is twofold, one, that the property has to comply with FEMA. Uh, in order to raise the house, uh, to, to, and secondly. That the Village Creek, uh, regulations require a flat roof, so that sounds like the two, um, hardships that have been, uh, raised by the applicant. First, with regards to FEMA compliance, I, I disagree respectfully with Attorney Blank, uh, with regards to the case law in Connecticut on FEMA compliance and as a basis for granting a, a variance. Um. FEMA compliance can be a basis for granting a variance, but the caveat is that. By complying with FEMA, you're not able to construct anything on the site. And that's not the case here, because the structure as is can be raised without adding that third, uh, story. And can be constructed, can be constructed, excuse me. So. The FEMA, the cases with, with regard to FEMA don't apply to the fact pattern that we're dealing with here, because. The prop, the existing house can be raised without adding the extra space. And that would be fully compliant with the regulations, it would, doesn't require a variance. Uh, secondly, the, with regards to the flat roof, uh, requirement with Village Creek. The other condition, or the other requirement under the general statutes, it's eight dash six A three. Says that the, um, the hardship has to be unique to the parcel. To the subject parcel and not affect generally the district in which it is situated. Those regulations in Village Creek apply to all properties in the Village Creek homeowners association. Um, the regulations that are an issue with regards to, uh, the changing regulations, I should say, whereby the. First floor, which was the lowest level of the existing house, um, now being considered a story. Also applies to all properties in the district, there is nothing unique about this property. The, these regulations, both the flat roof requirement and the FEMA requirement that, uh, raising it would. Um, require the, the lowest level to be considered a story, would apply to every single home in this district. And I understand that other homes in other parts of town may be able to go higher. But in the Village Creek Historic District, this applies across the board, so there's nothing unique about this property. Um, which is an absolute requirement that it be unique to the subject parcel. Um. There was discussion about prior approvals on other, uh, homes in the, uh, Village Creek, uh, district. So, one of the members had said it previously, there is no precedent when it comes to variances in terms of. Whether the board grants a variance, each application is viewed on its own merits, if, if. The board were to take the position that precedent exists, anytime you've ever given a variance for a setback or coverage. Another homeowner could rely on it as requiring that you grant it for them if you granted it prior, so there are no precedent when it comes to, uh, variances. Um, the fact that one was granted similarly for a similar situation previously. Maybe the case, but that doesn't necessarily mean to comply with Connecticut law. Um. The. Finally, with regards to, um, conserving the public health, safety, convenience, welfare and property values, in my letter that I submitted, uh, to this body. Um, I, um, referenced a portion of an appraisal that my client had performed on her property. And then the appraiser, and it was done in, uh, November of twenty-three, and that appraisal. Um, considered the, the subject, um, project across the street. And the appraiser, uh, determined that the increase in the stories by granting the variance and allowing for the, the, the higher stories here. There would be a five point five percent reduction or around forty thousand dollar reduction to her property value now. We, my client performed, had a appraisal performed on her property, so I can't speak to other properties surrounding, but. If her properties views are impacted to a five point five percent reduction, that property value reduction would apply to any property whose. Uh, views would be impacted by the, uh, by the variance. So. In sum, I think that the board has to consider whether or not a hardship has been shown, and I don't think under Connecticut law. That is the case, the Village Creek District, um, regulations apply across the board, as do the zoning regulations. Um, it, all properties in this area would have to comply with this, it's not something unique to this property. That doesn't affect other properties, and the case, and the statute is very clear about that point, that it has to be unique to the subject parcel. Um, and finally, I just want to reiterate with regards to, um, FEMA compliance, that the, uh, case law FEMA compliance. As a basis for granting a variance, as a, as a basis for a hardship. Speaks to the instance where you cannot raise, where you cannot build anything, by complying with FEMA, you are now unable to build anything, property is essentially valueless. And that's not the case here, um, I'm gonna quote from the ENF, which is the, ENF Association, which is the famous case on the Connecticut Supreme Court from twenty fifteen. Addressing this issue, and the Connecticut Supreme Court said that proof that a property has a quote peculiar characteristic. That has made it difficult for a particular use to comply with the zoning regulations does not justify the granting of a variance when the owner has made no showing. That the property could not reasonably be developed for some other use permitted in the zoning district, or that the effect of limiting the parcel or the. A permitted usage would be arbitrary or act to confiscate. The, by denying the variance, you are not confiscating anything, the homeowner would continue, would still be allowed to raise the existing structure. And continue to live in the, um, the second story, um, that is, uh, currently existing. My understanding, based on Attorney Blank's comments, is that the, uh, whether we're calling it a basement or a, or the first story, uh, uh, however we want to define it. That area is not currently a finished basement, it may be partially finished, there's a bathroom, it's not actually bedrooms, kitchens, it, it's, it's. Um, so there's not, the homeowner's not losing anything. By not being, they're looking to expand the size of their house, they're not losing anything by having to raise it. And that in and of itself, the, just because they can't do what they want with it is not grounds for hardship. So I'll end with that and appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition of this application?
Yes, we have, uh, Emily. Marshall. You have to unmute, there you go.
Yeah, um, I, Tammy, uh, you have my letter and I've outlined the reasons for. My opposition there, and there's just something I want to say, first of all, twenty-eight Dock Road is not waterfront. And it's not block, it didn't block anybody's view when the variance was given to the roof. And I think one of the things that was touched upon by the attorney is something that hasn't been discussed. Um. Village Creek homes were built to take advantage of the waterfront. There. And there's some amount of view that was allocated to each house that was built there. Mr. Vona is blocking three houses. Building this house, so it's not just, um, one neighbor who's losing property value, it's three neighbors. Um, and then to, um, the attorney's point, who'll speak on behalf of, of Terry Sims. Um. When you talk about expanding. Um, you know, it's what you. It's, it's about maximizing, at, at a meeting of the ARB, Mr. Vona said he had a right to maximize on his investment. That's true, uh, not at the cost of. Diminishing the property values of three other homes, at least three other homes. Um, and then something else that I need to bring up is that. I am not aware. That the ARB. If you are all under the impression that. Everything has been approved and you're assuming that you're approving or, or whatever. A plan that has already been approved by Village Creek. The plan that is being discussed now is not the one that was signed off on at Village Creek. The current plan to, our eye, my untrained eye. Is at least seven feet higher than the initial plan that was approved by the Village Creek ARB. That has not been addressed, and I'm curious as to why that has not been addressed, because. Homeowners were not made aware, this is something we just caught recently. In comparing the two drawings, if you look at the original drawing that was approved by the ARB, there are two steps in the front elevation. If you look at the original drawing that was approved by the ARB, there are two steps in the front elevation. When you look at the new drawings, there are these huge staircases leading up that I assume have to do with the whole foundation now being listed up in a top story. I'll leave it there. Um, as I said, I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, but to my eye, um it's not the same plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh Emily, I have a question.
Yeah.
Are you saying that what was presented to the review board?
I can't hear you.
We're looking at tonight.
I'm sorry?
Are you saying that what was presented to the Architectural Review Board is not the plan we're seeing tonight?
Correct. The plan that I have in my files that was approved by the ARB shows two small steps on the front elevation of the house. And the driveway is not elevated. That's the one that was shown to us that we were asked to give approval to that I did not sign off on. They are be approved it, that particular plan. When I approached the ARB about questions, I was, for this process, after the sign went up. I was directed to take all questions to the city at this point. So it's something that I have not raised with ARB because at this point, they feel it's something that should go to the city. So that's what I'm doing, that's why I'm speaking up now about the difference in the plans.
Let me ask, I think I'm following you, but I'm not positive.
Okay.
If we take the things that are outside the um foundation of the house, such as a driveway. Those are the things that you believe are not, were not properly uh represented tonight. But the house itself and from the foundation up, you, was that not presented correctly?
Correct. If you look at the two designs and um I sent Tammy the comparisons with my letter. If you look at the two designs, the original approved ARB plan shows two small steps on the front elevation of the house. When you look at these plans that have recently been submitted to the city, you see these large steps and you know. My bad for not asking for an architectural size drawing. But there are these teeny little prints on the side giving the the numbers, which you know, I could not see. I didn't worry about it until I saw the plan side by side and realized that there seemed to be a new height difference that wasn't being talked about.
I want to state for the record that that email was forwarded to the board along with two attachments.
Right, you're not loud enough for me to hear you. I get.
I'm sorry, I can't, I I couldn't hear that.
Submitted in Westport, I don't know what you're talking about. I'm not talking about Emily's comments, there's somebody that jumped in on top of this, what what did they say?
Oh, sorry, Andy, it was it was staff. I was saying for the record that Emily's email with the attachments was forwarded to the board.
Okay, you you're very quiet for whatever reason. Yeah, if if there's a big difference that we felt within the past between what's presented and what people are saying was presented to them. Then we need to pause um the uh, dig a little deeper with the Architectural Review Board. And see what it is that they thought they approved.
Thank you.
May I respond?
Is is there anyone else who wanted to, or you're responding to that?
I am, yes. So um Adam, if you could share screen, I'm not sure if you can. Can you please share screen from December of uh of Wendy's? Let me just back up and reply to uh Attorney Cosentini. Um, and just put some color on their appraisal. So this is my second application to the ARB. My first proposal had the addition of the home over the south part of the house. And when it went to uh uh, and and once it the ARB approved that design. The neighbors had then uh uh. Uh, I guess, wanted to appeal it. They did not approve of it because of the uh blocking of the site to the line of sight to the marsh area. So at that meeting.
Carlo, wait, Carlo, just just so that we can orient everyone, the.
Okay, this is.
The Attorney Constantini, uh his client reside.
Terry Sims, right?
Terry Sims up here and had, this is the, this is the original plan. And had concerns because the second floor was going to block their view.
As well as the Marshalls, right? So if you look where the uh railing is to the left of the house or to the right of the house right there. Okay, so this is, Adam, can you go back? I'm sorry. So the, I I, in keeping with the spirit of Village Creek. Which originally was created as a community of acceptance and compromise. I had said that, yes, in in an effort to be neighborly and and to uh uh. To get along, uh I will move the addition to the north end of the house where Adam has his cursor. And everyone seemed to agree and comply. So the uh appraisal that Attorney Constantine is talking about that Terry Sims had performed. Was with the addition on the south end of the home, which we then later moved to the north end. Uh, as the uh, so after that.
Wait, Carlo, just Carlo, just just so just we just finish this point off, the.
Okay.
The the, they submitted a letter to you saying that and just testified that.
Never seen this letter.
That the property value was going to go down by forty thousand dollars because of this addition. And they only gave you a little excerpt from the appraisal report that related to a different plan. A plan where their view might have actually been blocked, not the plan that's in front of you today, not the plan that was ultimately approved by the R board.
Correct. So, and to add insult to injury. Their homes are approximately, their line of sight is currently ten plus feet over my current roof. So, um, anyway, that was the.
But Carlo, to connect that though, and how much are you raising the house by?
On that particular side?
Yeah.
Uh, I've got to check, but to to your point. If they look at the first applica-, the first draw, the first set of drawings in the application to what the town has now. The base flood elevation and first floor elevation have never changed. Neither has the the heights on on these stories. So, in addition to me moving the addition to the north end of the home. I also agreed with Mrs. Sims that I would not build or obstruct any view. On the roof deck on the south part of the house. And by me doing that, Mrs. Sims and the Marshalls. Did not contest the ARB's approval. The the ARB. Sent the approval out with a two week time period per their association's attorney. To give people time to appeal uh the ARB's decision. And essentially nine months have gone by, six months have gone by. Okay, so there was no appeal within the first two weeks of the approval. What I'm proposing to do, and once again, I just want to reiterate that all drawings. The base flood elevation and the first floor elevation, as well as the height of the two floors, have never changed. So I, I, you know, if if you have a trained eye or not a trained eye, it's there on the drawing. Okay, my intentions, yes, I purchased the property. I want to use the home to its highest and best use based on the approvals that I was getting. Based on the 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 uh uh, on on those, on the on the approvals. I want to bring this house into compliance, I want to keep life and property safe. By bringing it into compliance, okay?
It's uh, it's so.
What, and 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 I don't understand, what I don't understand is Mrs. Marshall and Mr. Marshall. Are are in the middle of a full gut renovation upgrade of their property. And I find it very hypocritical that they're able to uh 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 bring their home to its highest and best use. While trying to to uh uh uh, to uh uh. Uh, make mine not uh stunt mind.
So, so let me just, Carlo, let me jump in for a second.
Um, yes.
So, so to answer some of the questions that came up, the, there was two applications to the Architectural Review Board. Uh, the second one was clearly different than the first one. And one thing that we will, you look, that I put up the letters of uh from the Architectural Review Board folks. In support of the application, those were dated within the last three days. They of course have the most recent plans. In the plan that was approved by them, there was, I'll call it, whether you want to call it a discrepancy or an oversight. The driveway was shown elevated where it's proposed to be elevated, but it didn't have anything to hold it in place. So then in the plans that originally got submitted to you, a retaining wall was put, was shown to hold up the top end of that driveway.
Correct.
There has since, that has since been removed and we've had plenty of discussions with the review board related to that. Nothing has changed with respect to the house.
Correct.
And we've kind of jumped out of order, so I don't know if you want to finish the public hearing part and then we'll finish the rebuttal, or you want us to finish the rebuttal then?
Yeah.
You got four other members beside me, uh I don't think the discussion of variance was entirely accurate. But I don't even need to go into that now. I think we're at the point where we have to separate out what would be a CAM review from talking about the. Um, the lifting of the house and the adding of of a story.
So we still have raised hands as well.
Why don't we recognize the next person in the queue?
Well, technically, it's the same, they re-raised their hands.
Well, they they, I'm sorry, they don't get to comment a second time. That has been our procedure for as long as I've been on the board.
Oh, okay, okay.
So you had your opportunity, and I know you want to respond, but that's not part of our policy. Is there any new person that wishes to comment in opposition of this application?
No additional raised hands.
Okay. Uh, then in that case, we will allow Mister Blank to uh respond and summarize the application.
Sure, thank you. What, hold on one second, did we have letters in support?
Yes, the attorney presented those at the begin, be.
And those are from the Architectural Review Board themselves, plus a neighbor.
Well, the neighbor one, I don't recall hearing.
Um, I I did email it to you, Adam, it's from Francis, my neighbor to the left of my house, that I, we share a property line with.
Okay, I would like for balance sake, hear her recommendation. Tammy, you have the letter?
No, I didn't receive that letter.
Uh, Adam, can you bring it up? If not, I can pull it up.
Uh, if it hasn't been submitted, I don't know if we can hear that letter, because it's unsubstantiated.
Yeah, I thought there was one though, um. But you never know, when the letters come and go and show up at the last second, and I never quite know what's available to us.
No, I had, for the record, I have two opposition letters and two support letters.
And I think they've already been introduced.
Right.
I believe you have three with Todd's.
Well, with Todd's, yes.
Yeah, Todd is Todd's. With respect to other recommendations, we had two Architectural Review Board and a neighbor, is that correct? Tammy?
I I.
Oh, don't.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
Don't answer for my staff, the staff is going to tell me the answer.
Yeah, so staff received two letters of support, both on the Architectural Review Board, the chair. Who was Miguel Fresconi and the President Amanda Foss.
Okay, right, so we clearly have supporters and those who don't support. Um, I wanted to try to keep what we're making a judgment about tonight. Within the foundation that exists. Um, and there's a question about whether adding a story um. Would run into the face of some difficulty regulation wise. Um, and I think it does, and I think it does because of the Architectural Review Board's requirement to have a flat roof. Because the alternative is not to have a flat roof, and then it could easily put the second story on. So I do think that's a hardship. But that's just me, so moving on.
Well, we'll get that in into. Discussion. So Mister Blank, if.
Sure, I just want to hit out just a couple of points that were raised. Um, uh Attorney Constantini raised that um it's not a unique hardship because it's shared by the entire district. And district. The district, yeah, well, yeah, district, just for the other commissioners that, but thank you, Andy. The district um is a, that's a term of art in the statute that refers to the zoning district, not Village Creek. So it it it's, it's it's unique to this property. It may be shared by other, some others within Village Creek, but it's certainly not, it's certainly not something that everyone within the SD one. Zone or the CD one S zone uh has.
So the difficulty we have, Adam, is you're not our attorney. But we've covered this many times, so in our, all of our efforts all along. We realized that we're talking about a piece of property. It is that piece of property, not surrounding properties, not what happened in the past, it is that situation that we're addressing.
Um, the, the other point that, one another point that was raised was that. There's a something about the FEMA case law says that you you have to be able to build nothing in order for you to get a variance related to FEMA. And then there was a Supreme Court case that was cited, which of course was not a FEMA case. And there is ample case law that says just the opposite of that, that under under FEMA. That you can, you can get a variance for FEMA-related hardships.
All right, will you, will you forward that to our staff, please?
Yeah, it's in the, you want their case or the cases I cited are in are in my narrative that is part of the record. Um, I can get the real cases, the full case sites to them if they'd like. Um.
At least one.
Sure, the um. The, I think, I think that was it. If I've missed anything, Carlo can jump in, but I think, I think that was it. There's also um, the, there was, there was actually a couple of the the other. The real concern from the neighbors was about blocking views, which we, again, we don't think we're doing. And we thought we we worked hard to redesign the house to make, try to make everybody as happy as we could. But um Juddelson versus Town of Madison Board of Appeals, it's a two thousand and six case. The Connecticut Supreme Court upheld the granting of a variance over objections of a neighbor that the addition would impact its water views. In that decision, the court says it's settled law that views of property owners are not the subject of zoning regulations. In Burglass versus Milford Planning and Zoning Commission, that was a a property owner sought to construct waterfront residence. By removing and replacing a second floor and constructing a new third floor and tower in the same footprint of the original home. The court rejected a neighbor's argument that the residence would negatively impact their views of Long Island Sound. Said uh any obstruction was private in nature, had no public bearing. Lordson versus Greenwich.
Well, well, the the law, the law, it seems that uh Carlo and his wife have made an effort. To please the neighbors by changing the design. So, you know, understand what you're saying, um that he has raising the house. But at the same time, he's made the point that he's trying to please the neighbors at the same time, that's pretty important.
Yeah, okay. Um, so that's it, that's my point is simply that there's ample case law that um that raising your house. And and if it happens to block someone's view, that's not a, that that the courts routinely uphold zoning boards, that that that's not a. A basis to deny a variance.
Correct.
Um, that's all I have, if you have questions, we'll take it otherwise.
Thank you very much. Um, with that, we will close, unless any board member has a further question. We'll close this section of public hearing and move on to the next application.
I'm sorry, can we back up? Did we want to close the public hearing? Uh, Andy, I wrote down, maybe I misunderstood, that you were asking for the case that was cited. Did you want to continue or did you want to close?
I want to continue until we get that case.
Oh, then Andy, uh we'll leave the public hearing open.
Okay.
No reason to close it.
All right, um, the only burden that does is it creates. All right, um, the only burden that does is it creates a one-month delay for the applicant. But I think at this particular point in time, that's probably a smart thing to do.
I, I, I would agree with you, Andy. I think uh, uh, on the applicant's side, I think there's some loose strings that uh, need to be tightened on this. Uh, maybe some clarification. Um, I might even suggest, given that there's some issue over the views that maybe they present us with some photographs uh, with an outline of uh, the current view and uh, an outline of the blocked view that the neighbors are claiming.
Yeah, you can take a photograph and then pen, pen in what the structure would be.
That's certainly easy enough.
But at the same time, we also want to make sure we're away with the Architectural Review Board. I, I believe everything that was said tonight. Um, and apparently there were two judgments made and I'd like to be real clear about that.
Yeah, certainly, it sounds like there are some discrepancies between uh, uh, the first site plan and the second site plan and what was approved and uh, I think we need to get some clarification.
Yep, and have it available when this goes forward to CAM review.
Yes.
I, I'm not, I'm not hundred percent sure about photos being taken from different parts. That's what I'm not clear on. How would you take a proper shot from the neighbor's home on their second?
You might have to take several, but I don't think in the end, other than demonstrating that the applicant made an effort to appease the neighbor, I don't think there's anything that the neighbor could say that would block this from going forward.
Understood.
Well, unless the neighbor presented visual evidence to us that the view was being blocked.
I don't think we need to go that far with that one, Lee. I mean, I, I think the applicant did um, their due diligence and above and beyond to make some adjustments. For the betterment of.
Point, uh, but I have always found that uh, you know, and hate to use the phrase pictures worth a thousand words, but in the past I have used photographs like that as an effective tool to gain either an approval or denial.
Yeah, well, well, in this piece, we're not meeting either the applicant or those who are opposing this application. We're, we're letting them present their information and, and we're making that decision based on what we're presented with. I don't want, I want to give them, you know.
I'd just like to give them an opportunity if that's the direction they feel they need to go.
We, we'll do our best to get photos. We got to come back anyway, so we'll, we'll do what we can.
Lee, for me, it, it just demonstrates the goodwill of the applicant. There's no, there's no aerial right that any neighbor has that's going to block this construction.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Blank, we will see you next month.
Thank you.
We will move on.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Do I need to stay on to vote to continue next month?
Uh.
It would be helpful.
Okay, I will do that.
Or we, we could vote right now to continue this.
No, we couldn't. No.
Okay, I'll just, uh, uh, stop my video, go on mute and um, pay attention.
Very good. Thank you, Keith.
Okay, everyone, thank you.
Thanks much.
So we will move on to the next application this evening. Number two four dash zero nine one nine dash zero two. Christopher Polidoro, uh, property located at one twenty Newtown Avenue. And Daniel, you're back on.
All right.
Will our, well, Daniel, why don't you read the application that we'll call on the applicant?
Sure. Uh, twenty-four dash zero nine one nine dash zero two, Christopher Polidoro. Variance of a front setback, secondary frontage per table four point three point one dash B and four point three point one zero, thirty feet required, eleven foot three proposed. For AC unit at a single-family residence in Zone CD dash one M, property located at one twenty Newton Avenue, District Five, Block Fifteen, Lot Thirty-five. Request, applicant seeks a variance to install an AC unit adjacent to a wing addition currently under construction. Background, the single-family dwelling was built in nineteen forty. Permits were issued in two thousand and five for an in-ground pool. In twenty nineteen for a second-story addition and in twenty twenty-three for a one-and-a-half-story wing addition fronting Fairweather Drive. This addition is to include a home gym, golf room, a hot tub, steam room and bathroom. Previous permits did not include the AC unit. It does appear that the driveway off Fairweather has been widened without approval and this will need to be remedied prior to closing out the current permit. Analysis and findings, due to the adoption on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four of the new zoning regulations, the required setback from the Fairweather property line is now far greater than under the old code, which was thirty-five feet from the street center line. This makes the addition under construction legally non-conforming. However, it could be considered a zoning hardship slash practical difficulty that the code has changed since this project has been underway.
Very good. Will the applicant please come forward, identify themselves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I am the applicant's counsel. My name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec and Hennessy, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stamford. And with me this evening is one of my colleagues, Dan Conant, who prepared the vast majority of the application and handled a lot of the work on this application. I wanted to make sure that Dan was recognized as well. Also present tonight is Chris Harrigan, an architect with Pagliaro Architects, along with Mr. and Mrs. Paul, um, Paul Adoro, were the property owners at one twenty Newtown Avenue. Just some background, the application was submitted to this board and on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Per year regulations, neighbors within a hundred feet were notified of tonight's public hearing by certified mail return receipt requested on or about September fifth. A packet was delivered to staff with, which included the green domestic return receipt cards, copies of letters for which we didn't have a green card back yet and any certified letters that were returned as undeliverable. In addition, per the new regulations, two signs were posted on the property to advise the public of tonight's hearing, one on Fairweather and one on Newtown Avenue, and those, those signs remain um, up as of today. Just a little bit of background, as was indicated in the memo, the owner is Christopher, Christopher Polidoro. The address, one twenty Newtown Avenue, District Five, Block Fifteen, Lot Thirty-five. The property is currently zoned CD one dash M. It was previously a residence. The lot is point three forty acres or about fifteen thousand one hundred fifty square feet. It's bounded by Newtown Avenue to the west, Fairweather to the south, the Kingdom Hall of Jehovah's Witness Church facility to the north and residentially developed properties to the east. At this point, um, Mr. Conant, are you able to screen share the um, the property survey? If you can do that, that would be great. Thank you. There are driveways to the property, both from Newtown Avenue and also from Fairweather, and a fence encircles the property on all sides, providing a visual buffer from those streets. As indicated, the property was purchased in twenty fourteen and as I mentioned earlier, it was then zoned a residence in various uh, permits were issued over time for additions to the structure, the most recent of which was in twenty nineteen. And then last year in twenty twenty-three, my client secured permits for that wing addition that was identified in the staff memo. Um, there we go. So, as you'll see.
I don't, I can't read this thing at all.
How's that? Is, is that better, Mr. Conrad?
That's better.
As you see, Fairweather Drive is on the right side of the screen. That's the south side of the property. Newtown Avenue is on the bottom of the screen off. You can't see Newtown, but there's along the, uh, there you go, on the side. The Kingdom Hall of Jehovah's Witness is on the north and there are other residentially zoned properties to the east of the property. The existing foundation structure under construction that is almost complete. It not only has the foundation, it has all of the walls, the exterior walls, interior walls, masonry foundation, all of the um, um, electrical plumbing and other facilities. It's virtually closed in at this point. So, when the ti, at the time when this structure, when this um, addition was proposed, it complied with all the requirements that existed at the time for the A-resident zone. Permit was issued, work commenced under that permit and work at that time was consistent with the regulations that existed at the time. As you are aware, the city adopted a new zoning regulation book in December of twenty twenty-three and those regulations became effective in February of twenty twenty-four. Between the time of the work, the permits were issued and work commenced and the location for the AC unit, which you see is to the right of the word "structure" under existing foundation structure. Um, the foundation, the location for that AC unit was decided and that's where it is. Unfortunately, it now sits in that secondary frontage setback, which is measured from the property line and not the center line of Fairweather Drive. And I think what had happened frankly, is the, the project was moving forward, all the requisite permits were issued and it was well-considered that uh, that AC unit location would be fine, given what the former zoning setback was. And then all of a sudden, the zoning regulations changed. Unfortunately, this AC pad and location was not identified on the original plan. Had it been identified on the plan, it would be deemed legally non-conforming and we wouldn't be before you. Unfortunately, we now have a thirty-six inch by forty-two inch concrete pad upon which the AC condenser sits. So we're before you to seek relief from the regulations that now require a thirty-foot setback from the property line from Fairweather Drive and no longer thirty-five feet from the midpoint of Fairweather Drive. Uh, we've tried to figure out what can we do to accomplish compliance and as you can see, the dotted line that's right in the middle of the word, existing foundation structure, that would be the new setback. There really isn't any other place to put this AK, AC condenser unit. Furthermore, there are electrical, plumbing and other systems that were designed and um, installed to accommodate the AC unit where it sits today at that location shown on the plan. As I mentioned earlier, there is a, a fence that runs the length of the property on Fairweather, providing a, a solid visual buffer from this side of a property, including the pad, to property owners that may be impacted by that visual, visual view of where that um, AC unit sits. And in fact, the property owner across Fairweather, I believe his name is Mr. Kelly, submitted a letter in support of this application for variance. So I think there were just a confluence of issues that happened. Uh, the, the permits were issued. They fully intended to get all proper permits for the AC unit. There was always going to be an air conditioning system in the house. They were moving forward with the project in accordance with the approved plans, found the location for the AC unit and then found that that, that location no longer complied with the regulations because the regulations changed and made this side of the ha, the property a secondary frontage for which a thirty-foot setback from the property line is required. So we're asking for a variance for the eighteen feet to bring it right to the edge of that AC unit. And we hope that we have demonstrated to you that the confluence of issues and circumstances result in what your regulations call an exceptional practical difficulty. And um, with a, coming to you for be, because of an extraordinary situation. Those are the new phrases in the zoning code. That generally just describes how we got to where we are today. You saw a similar application for Chestnut Hill at your meeting last month. Now albeit that dealt with the historic home. But once again, this is just a concrete pad with the condenser on top, screened by plantings and a fence. And had the regulations not changed, we would have been fully compliant. Had this pad been shown on the plans at the time the original permits were issued, this location would have been deemed legally non-conforming. Unfortunately, we're in a situation now where this is the only location that this condenser and pad can be placed. I don't have anything further to add. We're happy to answer any questions. Mr. Harrigan of Pagliaro Architects can answer any questions if you have them. And so can Mr. and Mrs. Polidoro. We look forward to hearing what your comments are and certainly, please feel free to, to share any, any of those that you may have.
Is there an alternative location that you don't desire but exists?
There really isn't, given the fact that that would then require um, work to the foundation, masonry wall, rerouting the uh, the refrigerant lines that already exist, rerouting electrical and plumbing. Um, is there, is there a, an, another location? Well, with any variance application, there's probably something else that can be done. But given how this was designed and given how this, this structure has moved forward and how it has been constructed, this really is the most appropriate place. In addition, it's no, it's not further into the setback than the, the southernmost wall of the house. If you go back, Dan, to the, the plan once again, it's tucked a little bit behind the existing, the proposed um, that it, that seems, that's where the edge of that wall is sitting. So it's parallel to it, maybe slightly behind it. Other than that, it's, we can't put it anywhere else because of this, because of the location where the systems come into the house right at that location.
I only see one, but I think it does, it would be hard to um, get the
It would be.
Collet lines that you need.
Yeah. It's an unfortunate circumstance. It would have, it should have been on the plan. It wasn't. Um, perhaps we should have then, the, the contractor and the owner and everyone else should have moved a little more quickly, but they thought that the locations that they had in mind would have been fully compliant and then the regulations changed. So uh, we're coming to you asking that you give us the assistance that we ask um, and hopefully it's sufficient. Also, the fact that a neighbor across the street who would be most impacted visually has no, had no issue with this and was sent a letter to that effect, we hope would be um, will be um, acceptable to you.
Okay, so as I understand your presentation, this was not included in the original request.
That's correct. It was not on the original plan for which the found, this addition was uh, permitted.
So at what point did this enter to the design? At what point in time?
It came about, um, I believe it was in May of this year when the, so the house was well under construction, this addition was well under construction and the architect and the contractor and the property owner settled on a location for the, the condenser and the pad. And that was just about in May. We went to the zoning staff, as I understand it, and were told uh, now that the regulations are new, they're effective as of February, the location you're, you've selected doesn't comply.
Okay, so you have already lines in and ob, obviously the electric could be changed, but you have other supporting uh, systems in the house that terminated that location you're showing?
Everything, everything is there.
Okay, well, so there was a practical difficulty because of your reliance on what you thought the code was. And I, it's pretty close to when the uh, code became effective and, and your reliance. So I think you have a practical difficulty myself.
It's just one of those unfortunate circumstances where everyone's thinking that the, the ideas they have in their head are going to be fine and then come to find out that once it's placed on a plan with setback dimensions identified, it's not. Um, and really, there's, there's no other place to put it. It's compliant. If we go back to that, the original uh, survey map, you'll see that it'll have to go on the completely other side of the house since that setback line runs directly through this new, new uh, addition. There it is. That's the setback line.
I'm gonna be real, I'm gonna be real quiet just from now on. I'll let other people talk.
Well, I, you know, I, I agree with Andy's position that uh, you know, certainly this came at an inopportune time for the applicant uh, in the change of the zoning regulations. Uh, may, uh, would have been the time to recognize it, make any changes before mechanicals were fully completed. Um, you know, I really don't have any major issue with uh, the location. Uh, it's partially screened from uh, both streets and uh, I, I, I feel that this is not uh, an extreme request. Anybody else wish to comment?
I agree with both Lee and Andy that, you know, this isn't that extreme.
Yeah, I do think a practical difficulty applies here.
I agree.
I don't think there's a hardship involved, but a difficulty, yes.
I mean, I think there are a couple of places you could reconsider it, but rerouting all that stuff does seem like a practical difficulty.
Okay, uh, do we have anyone that wishes also to speak in favor of this application? We do have the letter and Daniel, if you would read that letter into the public record?
Surely. Uh, this is from Michael Kelly, one fourteen Newtown Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut. I am the immediate neighbor of one twenty Newtown Avenue, directly across Fairweather. Regarding the posted notification vis a vis the air condensed, condenser unit, I am in complete support and have no issues with the current build or its location. Please let me know if you require any additional correspondence regarding this matter. Thank you very much, Michael Kelly.
Very good. Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak or comment in support? Do we have anybody who wishes to speak against this application?
Okay, we have one raised hand.
Okay.
I'm not going to try to say the name. I'm sorry.
I won't either.
Go ahead. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Nida Davulu? Are you there?
They did a hand raise.
Yes. The kind of inconvenience and, and insane, yeah, I mean, uh,
Could, could you pronounce your name for us?
Of course it comes with, uh, Mr. Nidadavolu. Nidadavolu.
Okay, and where do you reside?
Twelve Fairweather Drive. We are just three houses down.
Okay. On the same side of the street?
Yes, excuse me?
On the same side of the street?
Yes, same side. Uh, like, uh, we are in this house from forty-five years. Uh, yes. Uh, so we have, we are object for this, uh, this house construction. Uh, four things, I think. My husband will talk. And, and, uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, the one thing that has been happening for almost more than eight and a half, the inconvenience to all the neighbors and the unsafe traffic situation that was created by all this construction.
Application. Do you wish to comment about the variance they are requesting, which is for an air conditioning pad and condenser?
I, I think on the, on the variance, I don't believe we, uh, we have any objection because we don't know the exact situation before. But I would like to bring to your attention, uh, the kind of, uh, you know, inconvenience and unsafe situation.
Relevant in this application. I'm very sorry to inform you. If you had any complaints about traffic or disruption, that should have gone to a separate department.
Uh, okay. Which department, sir?
That would have been, um,
The building department, the public works, and the police.
Thank you.
Yeah, but that is never a single family house. The other, previous people were also doing some business. So I think I never, I, I, as much as I know of, that's not a single family house. That's what I want to say. So we were just wondering why the permit was granted in the first place.
Hmm. Well, that's not, that's not for discussion tonight. What we're dealing with is request.
Is after the fact, I understand, but, uh, it has been real.
There's no, there's no but. There is no but. What we're talking about is just that variance request.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Sachi, do you wish to comment on this?
I just have two comments. Um, certainly if there are issues related to construction that any neighbor is experiencing, uh, those concerns and complaints can be brought to the planning and zoning office. As Mr. Conroy also said to Public Works, the police department or the building department. And Mr. and Mrs. Polidoro are on the line right now. And I would suspect that hearing that their neighbors are, seem to be inconvenienced that Mr. and Mrs. Polidoro will take that into consideration and address those concerns with their contractors. I think that would be the appropriate thing to do. But Mrs. Nida Davulu, if it's, I pronounced it correctly, certainly have, um, various city departments that they can reach out to if their complaints are not, uh, ameliorated.
Yeah.
And I will assume that, uh, both the building department and, uh, planning and zoning upon their final inspections of this project will confirm that this is a single-family residence.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, if there's no other questions of the applicant, uh, I think I can safely say we'll close this item of the public hearing.
Unless there are any other questions of commissioners that, uh, if, or if we were unclear or if we left anything out, happy to answer them.
Yes, this is Steve. I have, I have a question. Uh, how long would the construction be going for? How long would it be ongoing for?
Uh, maybe I could have Chris Harrigan. Could you let them know how much longer? When it started, how much longer it take, it will take?
Yeah, we, we started in late last fall. Um, the project is just about complete. We're just finishing up interior finishes, um, and, you know, waiting on the condenser approval. We should be calling for final inspection within the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I, I only asked that question, um, Chris, because I, I drove by last week or I was driven by there last week. I saw like eight cars out there, a lot of cars right on that, on that corner, pertaining to that one property. So I don't know if it was for that property or a property next to it, but kind of hard to get into that street when you have five cars on each side. Um, it's kind of hard to go navigate in and out of that street. So I'm just asking how long the construction period would be for.
Yeah, it's just about wrapped up. Um, I would say by the mid-October, we'd have final inspection and it would be complete at that time.
All right, that should give some, that should give some release to the neighbors who was commenting on those concerns.
Yep.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have another hand raised and, uh, Tammy, should we record?
Oh, Rebecca Cobble, Cobble Connell.
Kind of after the fact here.
Hi, no, I'm actually the ho- one of the homeowners.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, everyone, for meeting. I just wanted to throw in there that we are very aware of the parking situation. Unfortunately, we obviously can't pit, park on Newtown Avenue because it's a main road. We've also actually had an issue with a homeowner in the condos on the other side of Jehovah's Witness, parking some of his commercial vehicles exactly on the corner that our neighbors were complaining about. We had called the non-emergency police line and apparently he's allowed to park there. So we've all, there's also that added to it, which is not helping the case. Um, but the project is very, very close to completion. So hopefully the cars will all be out of there very shortly. I just wanted to add that in because definitely had a, a neighbor parking issue with someone who doesn't live on the street.
Okay. Thank you very much for giving us that information.
No problem. Thank you.
With that, I will
Bye.
We have, we only permit one comment or one period of comment per person. So I cannot recognize you. Very well, I will close this portion of the public hearing and we will enter into, uh, discussions. And as we typically do, we take the last item first. Uh, so, uh, board members, please make comments and try to render a decision.
I see it as a practical difficulty rather than a hardship. Um, I don't know if somebody wants to make a motion, including that.
I have no
I was gonna say, I've been at this all day long and I'm, I'm gonna take a little rest here or something.
I know, Andy. Uh, I have no difficulty with this as a practical difficulty. I think, uh, you know, uh, yes, this is another case where somebody has gotten caught up in the change of, uh, zoning regulations. I think there was an oversight. I don't think it's a major oversight. And, uh, I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the, uh, concrete pad and condenser location, uh, for the, uh, diminished setback.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Was that you? Wait, was that you, Steve?
That was Steve Ferguson, yes.
Very good. Uh, will all those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye and raise your hand?
Aye. Lee, am I sitting out as alternate?
No, you're part of this.
Perfect. And I agree. Yes.
Okay. And we have a unanimous, uh, approval of this application.
Lyons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. And also I wish Mr. Ferguson a speedy recovery. I hope his physical therapy goes well over the next few weeks. But thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Sachi.
Yeah. And our best wishes to Lyons' wife who contracted COVID yesterday.
Wow.
Oh.
Wow.
Thank you for that. Um, I'm back. Whoops, I'm in the dark, so forget that.
You're in the dark.
Back to vote.
I've been in the dark for years. Um, okay, the next item up for discussion is, um, item two-four dash oh-nine-one-nine dash zero-one, nineteen Doc Road. Um, comments, discussion?
Yeah, I, I thought, you know, we got to remember that the attorney that comes and expresses an opinion is expressing an opinion, he's not telling us what law we should abide by because he's not our attorney. And if we think there's a problem, we go ask our attorney. I don't think there is a problem. I think he misstated some of the various, variance information. And I don't think there is, uh, or I do believe there is something unique about this and applies only to that property because it's that structure.
We're asking for continuation, right? We're just voting on the continuation.
Continuation, but I think we gotta start to clear some of this up a little bit. Because I think we have on our hands, what is the beginning of a mess? And i- if we stay clear-headed about this, then we're looking at whether you want to approve. Um, we're definitely going to approve because we always do, um, staying within the foundation and lifting the building. We always.
I, I agree. That has been, that has been our policy over the years, especially in flood zones.
That gets us to the, uh, addition to the building and the impact it has and whether it's, uh, appropriate. And I think we need a little more information in that respect.
Uh, as I said before, I think there's some loose
You, you cut out.
The applicant needs to, uh, address and, uh, I will recommend that we, uh, request a continuance on this.
I will second that.
Very good. All in favor of granting a continuance?
Aye.
Uh, signify by raising your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye.
Okay, uh, it's unanimous. We are going to grant a continuance, uh, to allow the applicant to address numerous issues that, uh, have come up during the hearing.
Now, before we leave the item, in addition to you and I, there's three other people on the board. Do any of those have anything they want Tammy to check out?
I, I, I don't have a specific enough recollection of all the loose ends that needed to be tied up, but
Yeah.
Do you want me to recap what my notes say you guys want?
Then probably a good idea. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So we want the case that was cited for the FEMA hardship, the case that was cited by Attorney Blank. We want photos with current view and then what a potential block view could look like, maybe a markup. And then we wanted them to address the discrepancies that were noted versus the, uh, for the ARB approvals.
Yeah, we want to make sure that we're talking structural plan that is what was approved by the ARB. It gets confusing at this point because they apparently had two. And even if they had two, is this the same, same thing, you know? So we need to ask them that direct question. I think there, was it their president? I don't know, chairman? I don't know what they call the ARB head submitted a letter. Um, and we should send this back to him and saying, here's the plan. Look on our website. Look at this plan. Is this what you, um, thought it to be and gave your approval for? A hanging proposition.
I think it's pretty clear what we're asking them for on that issue.
Yeah, but we got to make sure we ask them.
We, yeah, oh, definitely we're asking.
It's gotta be very clear because there are essentially allegations that, uh, I don't know, bait and switch isn't quite the right term, but there were allegations of misrepresentation of what was in front of us.
And that may not be the case, but I think we need to close that loop.
We do.
Right. And as far as the photos, I'm not sure I would find them very helpful because I don't think it's our determination to, if a, you know, a neighbor across the street has a problem with their view changing, I don't think that's sort of a, something that would weigh heavily in my decision. You know, if someone chooses to let their trees grow thirty feet tall and blocks someone's view, I mean, this isn't, you know, we have to stay within the guidelines of zoning and I don't think view is
Probably pose a question to our corporation counsel, but I think I know the answer. I think the answer is there's no, um, air rights over the properties, which also affects whether or not you have a view. So if somebody other than the property owner has air rights, um, and bought them, then they could prevent the owner from raising the house. But after that, they can't.
You know, it's, it's a good point, but I would also say that, uh, the opportunity would exist for, uh, the homeowners with their potential view being blocked to present photographs, uh, in their own behalf.
Yeah, sure.
And if, if there are any
But I think we need to know if Connecticut law even supports that.
Yeah, but I would also say there may be a regulation within, uh, Village Creek that regulates that. And I'd like to know that.
But that would have been the approval that they got the second go-round with the architectural review board. So we just need to know, is the plan that we see, the one they approved?
Yes.
And on, on your last point, Lee, I mean, I, I, the way I heard it was that in setting up the community in the fifties, there were certain values, um, you know, set out and agreed to, um, including, you know, equals, or including access of water views. But I don't think that that is actually, excuse me, I don't think that actually translates into, um, a, a constraint that you can't do something because it might be, um, you know, not in compliance with some general statements of purpose.
Um, I see your point. But let, let's let the applicant come forward to us with the information we've requested. And we'll sort it out next month.
And a shorter presentation.
We have one more thing to do.
Too much to ask.
We have one more thing to do. We can't leave just yet, right?
Yes, we have, well, we have two things. The mo- the most important of the two is action on the coastal site plan for, uh, two-twenty Gregory Boulevard that we saw last month, the tennis and swim club.
Yeah, we were a little remiss in that we didn't remember to put language about the CAM review in there that, uh, in our estimation, they met the requirements and that needs to be added. I move that.
Well, a little discussion, I, I feel that we need to take that action. Uh, we have yet to see any revisions based on our comments, especially, uh, site per impervious site coverage, which was the big issue.
Yeah.
And since we
But I thought we were, we were going to leave that for the CAM review, I thought, didn't that?
Okay. Well, then can we approve the, the site plan for CAM if we haven't seen it?
Well, we're put in this really awkward position where if we approve the variance, um, the applicant's variance, then we have to also approve, conditionally approve the CAM report. And then CAM gets another shot at. Um, so
Okay, that point's well taken.
Yeah.
Well, then I think we should
I think it's ridiculous. I think it's ridiculous myself. It's almost like that vehicle stuff we were dealing with for a while until they wised up and stopped doing it.
Oh, the repair shops, yes.
Yeah.
I have no problem giving CAM approval because planning and zoning gets their shot at it.
Yeah.
So someone make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
So for the record, we've got to say that the motion that the coastal site plan approval is consistent with CCMA.
Okay. And we did have a letter to that.
We did.
I will second the motion. All in favor?
It is consistent with CCMA.
All right. In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Favor.
Okay, we have a unanimous decision, all in favor. And lastly, I hope everybody has read through the minutes of last month's meeting. Any changes, corrections or comments? Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting, the minutes of the the August fifteenth, the August fifteenth meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll second.
Aye.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
I will abstain only because I was not present.
Okay, so we have
So we had yes from
I think Steve was there.
Yes, I was there, yes, I was there. I said, I said aye.
Yeah. He was there. And then I think Danielle and then Lee and then me, I don't know, Keith, were you there last month?
No.
Were you with us last month?
No.
Okay, so Kathy and Keith are abstaining.
It's fine, it passes with three.
Is that correct, Kathy?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, that is correct. Good.
Very good. I'll make a motion that we adjourn the hearing tonight.
You all.
Good evening.
I'm tired.
Time to eat.
See you, guys.
Yeah. All right. Bye-bye.